Thanks Jen. This is Council President Stacy Kelly. We're going to begin our council meeting of Tuesday, July 28th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America.
Of America.
Under indivisible liberty and justice.
Mayor Biaseada. Director Flopp Nutello. Director Finance Petruniac.
Here.
Councilman at Large Elliott.
Here.
Councilwoman at Large Kelly.
Here.
Councilman at Large Kuyu. Board One Councilman Kiasis.
Here.
Board Two Councilman Martin.
Here.
Board Three Councilman Snitzky.
Present.
Board Four Councilman Delacqua.
Here.
Director Public Service and Properties Johnson.
Here.
Building Commissioner Grassi. Engineer Collins.
There are no words for the reading and disposal of the Journal, July 28th. Our consent agenda dated July 28th, there's no language for that this evening. And we'll move on to our resolutions of commendation.
President Kelly, we do have a consent agenda this evening, one item.
Oh, excellent, okay, I missed that, I apologize. Councilman Kuyu, could you put the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, it's Councilman Kuyu.
I got, I had it, Councilman. If there's no division of the question, accept the consent agenda for July 28th of 2020.
Second, this is Councilman Snitzky.
Call please. Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly. Yes. Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Moving on to resolution of commendation.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that, this is Delacqua. I move that council, if there's no division of the question, I move that council read resolution, suspend the rules under the Charter, read resolutions 172020, 182020, and 192020 by title only for their first and final reading.
Councilman Elliott, I second the motion.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky. Resolution number 172020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. A resolution of commendation to Sonia Hurwick, Director Finance, City of Seven Hills, Ohio. Resolution number 182020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. A resolution of commendation to Mario Pastilli, Service Department, City of Seven Hills, Ohio. And resolution number 192020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilperson Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. A resolution of commendation to Joe Burdick, City of Seven Hills, Hall of Fame Resident of the Month for July 2020.
There are further motions.
Madam President.
Councilman Delacqua.
Thank you. I move that council approve the emergency clause in sections three of Resolutions 172020, Resolution 182020, and Resolution 192020, provided there's no division of the question.
Councilman Elliott, I second.
Call please. Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Eli. Yes. Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky. Is there a further motion?
Madam President. I'm, I move that, sorry, if there's no division of the question, I move that council to adopt Resolutions Number 172020, 182020, and 192020, as emergency measures.
Councilman Elliott, I second.
Call please. Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Resolution number 17-2020, Resolution 18-2020, and Resolution 19-2020 have all been adopted. Moving on to reports of committees, planning, zoning, and economic development.
Yes, Madam President, this is Councilman Snitzky. Planning, zoning, and economic development had a meeting tonight. Minutes will be on file with the clerk as soon as I can get them done. Our next meeting will be September 22nd, unless there is a special meeting called in August during our break. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving on to public work.
Yes, Madam President, this is Councilman Kuyu. Public Works' last meeting was July 14th. The minutes are on record with the Clerk of Council, and our next meeting will be September 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kuyu. Community Services.
Madam President, this is Councilman Curriasis. Last community service meeting was July 14th, minutes are pending, and the next meeting is September 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Curriasis. Police and Safety.
Thank you, Madam President. The next Police and Safety meeting is going to be held on September 8th.
Thank you, Councilman Elliott. Moving on to Parks and Recreation.
Madam President, Parks and Recreation held their meeting this evening on July 28th. Next meeting is scheduled for September 22nd, and the minutes are pending from tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Rules, ordinances, and ethics.
Madam President, this is Councilman Delacqua. The Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics Committee met this evening, July 28th. The minutes are pending. Our next meeting will be on the evening of September 22nd.
Thank you, Councilman Delacqua. This is Council President Kelly, Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel. Our last meeting was on July 14th, 2020, the minutes are on file with the clerk, and our next meeting is September 1st of 2020. Mayor, do we have any appointments or confirmations this evening?
None this evening. Mayor Biaseada.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Clerk, do we have any communications, petitions, and claims?
Yes, I have received a communication today from former War II Councilman Bob Robel of Winchester Oval, asked that I read this into the record. I am writing in support of amended Resolution 152020. Please consider the following. Council's vote on this resolution tonight is only to put the proposed Parks and Recreation Tax Levy on the ballot this November or not. That is the only issue to be debated and decided at this time, not the merits of the levy itself. Council has a duty to put before the voters any proposed tax levy that addresses a legitimate need and passes legal muster. The proposed tax levy was vetted in the appropriate council committee and by the Law Department. It met those requirements. Under Ohio law, the voters of Seven Hills have the right to approve or not the proposed tax levy. Passing amended Resolution 152020 will allow the voters to hear the arguments for and against the levy and decide the issue on its merits. Not putting the issue on the ballot means that city councils, not the voters, will have decided the issue. Therefore, I urge all council members to vote yes on this resolution. Signed, Bob Robel, former War II Councilman, Winchester Oval. That's all we have tonight.
Okay, we'll move on to our ordinances and resolutions. We'll have the third reading of ordinance number 48-2020.
Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance number 48-2020 by title only for its third and final reading.
Councilman Curriasis, second.
Call please. Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Yes.
Ordinance number 482020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance to amend section 123.01, as contained in chapter 123, ordinances and resolutions of Title III Legislative, Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of adjusting posting requirements to conform with the city charter.
There are further motions.
Yes, Madam President, I move that we pass ordinance number 48-2020.
Councilman Curriasis, second.
Call please. Delacqua. Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Can I hear you?
I did now. Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Ordinance number 48-2020 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 51-2020, for the second reading.
Ordinance number 512020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, a certain charter amendment pursuant to Article 10 of the Charter of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending Article 14, voter approval of zoning changes, Section 7, Planned Unit Development ordinances.
Thank you. We'll now have the first reading of ordinance number 58-2020.
Ordinance number 582020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of 2,000 ton of rock salt at $50.20 per ton for the 2020-2021 winter season through the Ohio Department of Transportation Consortium Contract Number 018-20, and authorizing an amount not to exceed $100,400 payable to Compass Minerals America for said salt purchase.
Thank you. Before we move on to ordinance number, the reading of ordinance number 59-2020, I'd like to make a motion to amend. We need to add in the total amount here for our waste management in an amount not to Jesus, Pete, let me try that again. Oh my God, I can't read. $921,8468, not to exceed for ordinance number 59-2020. Is there a second?
Martin, second.
That was a tongue twister. Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott. Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
We will now have the first reading of amended ordinance number 59-2020.
Amended ordinance number 592020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance authorizing and approving the exercising of the first of two one-year options for the five-year residential refuse collection and disposal recycling services and disposal of solid waste contract between Waste Management of Ohio and the City of Seven Hills. Amended ordinance number 111, 2015, passed by council on November 9th, 2015, covering the period of January 1st, 2016, through December 31st, 2020, appropriating an additional sum payable to Waste Management of Ohio not to exceed $20,000, representing the increased cost for the option year one period of January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2021, and appropriating a total amount not to exceed $921,084.68.
Moving on to the first reading of ordinance number 60-2020.
Madam President, Councilman Martin.
Councilman Martin.
I move that we suspend the rules of council and have, and read ordinance number 60-2020 by title only for its first and final reading.
Delacqua, second the motion.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky. Ordinance number 602020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Signal Service Company Incorporated, appropriating an amount not to exceed $114,392.34 for the Broadview Road Traffic Signal Improvement Project at 7701 Broadview Road, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President, Councilman Martin.
Councilman Martin.
I move that we approve the emergency clause in section five of the ordinance.
Delacqua, second the motion.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President, Councilman Martin.
Councilman Martin.
Yes, I move that we pass ordinance number 60-2020 as an emergency measure.
Delacqua, second the motion.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Ordinance number 60-2020 has passed.
Madam President, this is...
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, who is this, please?
Yeah, Madam President, this is Engineer Collins.
Yes, Engineer Collins, go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you very much. I perhaps should have mentioned this before it was voted on, but I just wanted to remind you and your fellow council members is that the cost to install this new traffic light for the Myers facility for $114,392.34 is going to be fully paid by Myers, okay, including the cost of inspection and including my services to administer the project. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you for that clarification. Okay, we're going to move on to the first reading of ordinance number 61-2020.
Madam President.
Councilman Curriasis.
I move that we suspend the rules of council and read ordinance number 61-2020 by title only for its first and final reading.
Councilman Kuyu, I second that.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky. Ordinance number 612020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance to appropriate the sum of $5,257.28 payable to Sixmo Architects of Marietta, Ohio, for professional services rendered for plan reviews for the month of June 2020 as interim chief building official for the City of Seven Hills and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman Curriasis.
I move that we approve the emergency clause in section three of the ordinance.
Councilman Kuyu, I second that.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman Curriasis.
I move, I move that we pass ordinance number 61-2020 as an emergency measure.
This is Councilman Kuyu, I second that motion.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Ordinance number 61-2020 has passed. We'll now have the first reading of ordinance number 62-2020.
Madam President.
Councilman Elliott.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read the ordinance 62-2020 by title only for its first and final reading. Councilman Snitzky, I'll second the motion.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky. Ordinance number 622020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a two-year technical service support agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Striker Medical for performing annual technical service support of the recreation centers, three life PAC CR Plus AEDs, appropriating the sum not to exceed $2,120.40 for said service for the period covering March 1st, 2020, through February 28th, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman Elliott.
I move that we approve the emergency clause found in the last section of ordinance 62-2020. Second the motion.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman Elliott.
I move that we pass ordinance 62-2020 as an emergency measure. Second the motion.
Call please.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin. Snitzky.
Ordinance number 62-2020 has passed. We'll now have the first reading of ordinance number 63-2020.
Ordinance number 632020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a mayor's court online docketting and payments module license agreement and mayor's court software and service purchase license agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with the Baldwin Group Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, and appropriating the sum not to exceed $19,840 for software purchase, annual maintenance, GBS conversion, and online docketing, and payment module for updating of the City of Seven Hills mayor's court software.
Thank you. We'll now have the first reading of ordinance number 64-2020.
Ordinance number 642020, introduced by Mayor Biaseada and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliott, Kuyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzky, and Delacqua. An ordinance to appropriate a sum not to exceed $36,000. An ordinance to appropriate a sum not to exceed thirty-six thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars for the purchase of one two thousand twenty Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel drive for use by the city's Seven Hills Fire Department where the pertinences said purchase to be made from Ganley Chevrolet of Aurora through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, Office of State Purchasing, State Contract Number RS nine oh one six two zero.
We'll now have the first reading of ordinance number sixty-five dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand twenty, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Council Persons Kelly Elliott Cooyou Kuriasis Martin Snitzke and Delaculla. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with North Coast Two Way Radio of Maple Heights, Ohio, for the purpose of outfitting the city's Seven Hills Fire Department's new two thousand twenty Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel drive fire vehicle with equipment and pertinences and appropriating the sum not to exceed five thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and three cents for said purchase.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, we'll now have the first reading of ordinance number sixty-six dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand twenty, introduced by Mayor Biaseata, Council Persons Kelly Elliott Cooyou Kuriasis Martin Snitzke and Delaculla. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, a certain charter amendment pursuant to Article ten of the Charter of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending Article five Administrative Departments, Boards and Commissions, Section six F two Fire Department Appointments to repeal the reference of part-time Fire Chief and to add new Section F two stating that the minimum requirements for a full-time firefighter shall be determined by the Fire Chief and City Council.
Thank you, Carol. Before we move on, I have a question in regards to ordinance sixty-six dash twenty twenty. Um, is, is the Fire Chief on?
Yes, I'm sure he is.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Um, I just, uh, I'm not, I'm not clear on this, so I just, I want a point of clarification if you don't mind. I'm wondering, why is, why are the minimum requirements for staffing for the full-time firefighters to be determined, be determined by council? Is, isn't this a function that falls under the Civil Service Commission?
I don't believe, uh, any minimum standards for any position for the Fire Department is set by civil service.
Madam President.
Councilman Elliott.
Yeah, I believe I'm gonna have to call a point of order, or this should be discussed outside of a meeting. I mean, it should be in a meeting, but possibly, uh, during my committee, which will be on, in the September, or middle of September, on September eighth, we can discuss this.
That's fine, that's totally fine. Yeah, I just, I wasn't quite sure, so yeah, I, I would agree, that's fine, I could, I'll wait. I'll wait until September eighth, I just wanted some clarification, but that's fine. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we'll have clarification on all that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the third reading of amended resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty.
Madam President, Councilman Delaculla.
Councilman Delaculla.
I move that council suspend the rules under the charter and reads amended resolution that fifteen dash twenty twenty by title only for its third and final reading.
Martin, second.
Call please.
Delaculla.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kuriasis.
Yes.
Cooyou.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Amended resolution number fifteen, two thousand twenty, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Council Persons Kelly Elliott Cooyou Kuriasis Martin Snitzke and Delaculla. A resolution determining to proceed to submit to the elector of the City of Seven Hills question of an additional one point four mil tax levy for parks and recreational purchases pursuant to Section five, seven zero five point one nine H of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman Delaculla.
Thank you, in order to, uh, get the, uh, resolution to the county in a timely manner, I move that council approves the emergency clause in Section six of the resolution.
Martin, second.
Call please.
Delaculla.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kuriasis.
Yes.
Cooyou.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
President.
Councilman Delaculla.
Thank you, I move that council adopt amended resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty as an emergency measure.
Martin, second.
Call.
Delaculla. Delaculla.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kuriasis.
Yes.
Cooyou.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Amended resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty has been adopted. Moving on to reports and communications from the Mayor slash Safety Director.
Thank you, Madam President, this is Mayor Biaseata. Um, couple housekeeping items. Uh, first and, I, I say this a lot, first and foremost, I want to thank all the residents, uh, that helped make the Stay-at-Home Day successful. Um, two thousand views for our concert, sixty participants in the la, um, raffle, um, and, um, it, it, couple hundred, few hundred people were out in their yards, uh, to greet, um, the Stay-at-Home Parade, and it was, uh, very uplifting. Um, it's a long tradition in Seven Hills of home days, and more importantly, we got a lot of, somebody's talking when I'm talking, but, uh, that's okay. Long tradition of home days, uh, and just as long tradition of having a Home Days Committee. Um, year in and year out, um, this committee consists of essential workers and many, many volunteers from the community. Um, this year, uh, the committee, uh, to protect those volunteers was just our essential workers, and I'd like to recognize them right now. Tony Terry, Kristen Saban, Spencer Abbott, Jen Berger, Jack Johnson, Sue Oyster, Todd Stimmons. Thank you, uh, without all your support, this wouldn't have been the success it was. I'd like to thank all our elected officials, Law Director, Council President, and all our council people, to be brief, uh, every one of you made a contribution for our raffle, made that a success. I want to thank our sponsors, like all our events, um, we try to get as many sponsors as possible, um, Home Days Fall Fest, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the sponsors for this event were Pleasant Lake Villa, Seven Hills Health and Rehab, Fratuner Funeral Home, Danbury Senior Living and Waste Management. I want to do an extra shout-out to Chief Saluma Lieutenant Capus, um, for putting together the protection we needed to get through all the different streets. They and the entire Seven Hills, uh, police force, uh, that day and every day have done a tremendous job of keeping us all safe, so thank you, Seven Hills, uh, police. Um, though we're just getting started, I want to thank my task force committee members, just like I thank my home committee, Home Days Committee task members, Councilman Cooyou for your input, Kristen Saban, Jack Johnson, Dan Collins, Mark Splitzer, Scott Bell, Mike Vannell, and Sue Oyster, and, uh, and, uh, Technical Advisor in his role of West, at West Creek Conservancy, uh, Mr. Pete Lloyd, thank you. Um, very, very important work from that task force, and the fruit of that labor, um, is underway. Uh, the first project is on the Waxbury Basin, that was approved, and that contract went out to the vendor, and, uh, the next time we all get together, we're gonna have a second contract that'll come to Finance Committee for improvement on Allah that'll directly, uh, benefit on non-array, so, and many, many more to come over the next few weeks. Update on finances, I mentioned this, um, briefly, in our Finance Committee, year over year when comparing June year-to-date, twenty twenty against year-to-date June twenty nineteen, we are one million three hundred thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars below last year. Spending is down from a general fund standpoint, twenty-four percent this year. Um, capital and infrastructure spending is going to start, um, based upon these, how aggressive we were this year, and understanding capital and infrastructure are long-term things, uh, that not necessarily can be managed year-to-year, um, but we've done exceptionally well watching the bottom line this year, and I, I thank my staff, um, for executing that direction early on. I also like to thank council for their support on amended resolution fifteen, twenty twenty, and certainly there'll be plenty more, uh, detail and support on that in the weeks and months ahead. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the reports from Directors, we'll start with the Director of Finance.
Thank you, Madam President, this is Finance Director Petruniac. I just have one, um, reminder to Seven Hills residents that the payment for the annual sewer maintenance bills is due back to the city's Finance Department by August first, uh, so that's fast approaching, approaching here. Uh, any unpaid fees, along with a ten percent penalty, will then be certified to the county auditor and included on next year's property tax bill. That concludes my report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Director Petruniac. Moving on to the Director of Law.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Director Pignatello, the Director of Public Service and Properties.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, my only announcement is, it's with saddened heart that, um, I announced to you all that we lost one of our longtime members, um, in the Service Department, one of our longtime employees, Joe Lapucci. Joe was a thirty-six-year, uh, employee of the Service Department, and unfortunately, um, he's no longer with us, and I just, um, ask for all of your prayers for Joe's family in this, in this period. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Director Johnson, our City Engineer.
Thank you, Madam President, Engineer Collins here. Um, more or less, uh, I don't really have a report besides my, uh, report is on file at the Mayor's office, however, um, I do have a request of, of you, Madam President, this evening, um, a, as you probably are aware, um, last Tuesday, we had a special public works meeting where, um, the mayor administration presented its, uh, um, star, its, uh, Water Management, uh, Committee Task Force, you know, to, uh, to the public, and all the plans that we have, um, in moving forward, short-term and long-term. Well, there was a project that we discussed, um, at that meeting, and it was the, uh, the Dona Ray Drive near the Olive Drive intersection drainage improvements, back to me, or just touched base about it just moments ago, and, um, we, we solicited for bids on this, uh, on these improvements here, where we're gonna be installing, uh, two double catch basins along with replacing, um, approximately, uh, two hundred seventy feet of curb, just so it catches drainage that's flowing down Donna, down Donna Ray and heading down, I'm sorry, down Olive Drive, heading west on Donna Ray. Um, these catch basins and this, this curving system's gonna help deflect this, uh, water that jumps the curb currently and affects probably three or four residents, uh, just on the east side of, uh, of, uh, Donna Ray Drive. Um, this has been a problem from what I understand for like the last eight to ten years, and these poor residents, um, get over and did it with, uh, uh, stormwater from the street that should be intercepted by our storm store collection system, and it currently isn't. So, my, my request to you, and I hope it's not asking for too much, is that I do understand that this Friday, the thirty-first, we're having a, uh, public hearing, uh, meeting at six-thirty, I was wondering if, um, if by chance there could be a special finance committee held just before that, just to formally award this, uh, contract to a contractor, uh, named Sutton Stone Contracting in the amount of forty-one thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars. This falls, uh, above the twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, mayor's spending limit, however, it is below the, the fifty thousand dollars, um, threshold that, you know, permits us to get finance committee approval on moving forward. Um, so, w- with that, um, I will email, uh, you and the clerk, um, my recommendation to the mayor and the service director on this project with all the information contained within, it shows that we did solicit the five contractors, and we did receive two, uh, bids, with, uh, like I said, Sutton Stone Contracting being the lowest and best bid of forty-one thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars. There's also gonna be a graphical, a graphic exhibit map that explains our improvements. Um, unfortunately, this Friday, I won't be able to attend the meeting, 'cause I'm, I have a, a, a pre-planned, uh, vacation day scheduled, but again, all the information I will email you explains the project in its entirety, and of course, in the meantime, you know, I, you can email me with any questions, um, uh, that's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate it. Um, I have no problem holding a special meeting on Friday, July thirty-first, email with all the information in it, and I'll move forward with Carol to get the announcements out.
Thank you very much, Madam President, Engineer Collins out.
Thank you so much. And we'll move on, uh, uh, with reports from the Directors, from the Building Commissioner, please.
Thank you, Madam President, City and the Council. I'd like to start this evening with a brief update on our larger commercial products, projects. The Vitalio Senior Residences on Rockside Road is coming along. The memory care and assisted living buildings are near completion, ninety percent completion. Uh, the Myers Project on Broadview B Road, as you pass by, you will see the shell of the new buildings, the new retaining wall, and lots of site work under construction. We're currently reviewing plans for a proposed single-family dwelling to be constructed on Glenella Drive. I'd like to convey that the, uh, zoning board of appeals will meet on Wednesday, August twelfth at seven PM. There's, uh, one variance request on the agenda. The planning commission meeting scheduled for August fifth has been canceled due to the lack of submissions. The next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting will be on September ninth at seven PM. That concludes my report, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, before we have miscellaneous comments from council, it looks like we have some miscellaneous issues, uh, from the zoning board, the zoning board of appeals, the floor motions that need to be addressed.
Miss Madam President, this is Councilman Snitzke. Uh, the zoning Board of Appeals me, uh, met on July fifteenth and granted unanimous variances to two, uh, properties. Uh, if there's no division of the conque, of the question, I'd like to concur with, I'd like council to concur with the decision of the zoning board of July fifteenth, twenty twenty, in granting the variance request of Brian Papish of twenty-six forty East Hill Circle for a variance to ordinance number nine six three point oh two B six to allow the construction of a proposed one hundred and eighty square foot shed to exceed by thirty-six square feet, the maximum allowed shed area of one hundred and forty-four square feet as described on the applicant, application submitted. Can I get a second?
This is Councilman Cooyou, I second that.
All right, can I get a vote of council?
Delaculla.
Call.
Delaculla.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
Kuriasis.
Yes.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
There is a further motion. I'd like council to concur, if there's no division of the question, with the decision of the zoning board of July 15th, 2020, and granting the variance request of Nick Amelatic of 535 Ridgeview Drive for a variance to ordinance number 963 dash O2A1 and 963 dash O2A3 accessory buildings reuses, and ordinance number 99.01B Residence Districts Rear Yards to allow the construction of a 1,320-square-foot additional unattached garage, 377 feet from the rear property line, as described in the submitted application. Can I get a second, please?
This is Councilman Kuyu, I second that.
Call, please.
Delacqua La.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Okay, council has approved the variance put forth by the zoning board for both parties, uh, both, uh, motions in question. We'll go ahead now with our miscellaneous comments from council. We'll begin with Councilman, uh, John Kuyu.
I have nothing at this time, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kuyu. Councilman Curriasis?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, I want to, uh, thank the former Councilman Bob Roble for his communication tonight with council, uh, setting the record straight about the tax levy, 'cause there's a lot of bad information out there on social media floating around, and, um, I usually try to take a walk every night with my wife, so I talk a lot to the residents in Ward 1, and let them know what's going on, and everybody that I've talked to in the last month is in support of this tax levy. They think it's great, they think that the rec center is very, very important to the senior citizens, the youth, it needs to be kept up, and they think the parks need to be kept up, so I just want to thank him again for setting the record straight, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Curriasis. Councilman Elliott?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the only thing I have this evening is I'd like to send my condolences, condolences out to, uh, Joe from Services, his family, and, uh, I'm sure, I, I believe he was here over 40 years, close to 40 years. Um, I think he should be recognized in possibly other ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Elliott. Councilman Snitzke?
Yes, Madam President, uh, I've got a couple things. First off, thanks to Bob War, Bob Roble, it's good to know that he's still involved in keeping an eye on things. Uh, the rec center is a real asset. One of the problems when it was originally built, it was not built with a maintenance levy. It needs to be maintained, to do so out of the general fund would be a huge drain, uh, it, it, there's improvements that need to be made to it now. Uh, this is a great idea. Uh, the Lapucci family, my mother and dad were real friends with the Lapuccis. Uh, in fact, my mom used to bowl with Mrs. Lapucci over at Seven Hills Lanes, so, um, uh, condolences out to Joe and his family. Uh, Home Days, Tony Terry did a heck of a job, and when I originally looked at driving around the city, I thought, oh, man, this is, this is a, this is a weak replacement for Home Days, but it was an absolute blast. It was absolutely a lot of fun, that little parade. I'd like to actually see it to be part of future Home Days. I, I, I think it was a neat thing to do, and I think we ought to think about making it a permanent thing with, when, when Home Days gets back to normal. And the Allah Donner Ray Project, um, yes, we need to get that going as quickly as we can. There's a number of, um, there's a couple of elderly residents down there that have had, uh, fl, uh, street-induced flooding, uh, ever since Donner Ray was improved, uh, paved, and we really need to get at that, and I appreciate Dan Collins and all the work that the, uh, uh, the Water, um, Board did to get this going, a, and I want to see that get done as soon as possible. That's it for me this evening, everybody take care.
Thank you, Councilman Snitzke. Uh, Councilman Delacqua La?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, I just want to express my condolences and the condolences of our entire family, uh, for the loss of Joe Lapucci. Mr. Lapucci, Al Lapucci, um, goes back a number of years with, with my family, particularly my mom, she always had the highest regard for him and always spoke so well of him. Uh, my experience with Mr. Lapucci Senior has always been that he's been a gentleman, a man of goodwill. Uh, my heart is broken for what he and his family must be suffering right now, so, Mr. Lapucci, please know that our thoughts and prayers are with you and how we grieve with you for your, for your loss. Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Delacqua La. Councilman Martin?
Madam President, thank you. I want to echo a few things that, uh, Councilman Snitzke had indicated, uh, regarding the parks and rec levy, uh, and, and that is in particular, I, on its face value, it's a parks and rec levy, um, but more importantly, it's an economic development issue, and, and I frame it that way because most, uh, you want to measure the temperature of a community, how well it's doing, uh, economic development is one of those ways of doing that, and economic development is more than just infrastructure, and it's more than just jobs, and it's more than just buildings and, and businesses, but it's also the amenities that a community offers in order to attract young families into the community, to keep the community, uh, with some vitality, a community with some youth, a community that attends schools, a community that are future taxpayers of, for properties that will show pride of ownership and continue the tradition that Seven Hills has had for the past 40 to 50 years, so, of that type of activity. So, parks and rec is more than just, uh, keeping a rec center open or, or for maintenance, it's for amenities to attract, to attract young families, and I, and I hope folks can see the importance, uh, that it represents more than just recreation, it represents vitality. And, uh, I also want to thank, uh, uh, Tony Terry for his efforts of, of, of the Stay-at-Home Days, and I really had great fun, and my wife and I both in the parade, and, and, uh, and, and nodded hat to the police chief, uh, I'm sure it had to be the police chief, accorded all the closing off the roadways, it was such a, a complicated route, but they were, uh, my wife was quite impressed with, with, uh, everyone being Johnny on the spot and having, having, uh, everyone's safety, uh, in hand, and, uh, so we appreciate that, appreciate all the other staff members who were involved in those activities and fire and as, as well as others, so, again, everyone have a good, uh, a good week, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. This is Council President Kelly. Um, I too wanted to wish con, my, uh, deepest condolences to the Lapucci family, uh, and may he rest in peace. Uh, Joe was a very kind, uh, giving individual, and he, he was very kind to myself and to my mom, so that I will never forget, so my prayers go out to his family. Um, in, in relation to, in response to, uh, Bob Roble's communication, uh, thank you for sending it, and I just wanted to express my opinion as well. Um, I, I truly believe that, that place in all of the ballot issues before a resident is the right thing to do. I feel it's part of the democratic process, and it's something that should be, you know, placed before our voters. Um, I also want to stress, you know, it's still my hope that at some point we're able to hold our semi-annual award meeting prior to the November 3rd election, but right now, all of that is out of our control with the restrictions placed upon us, but moving forward, I would strongly encourage our residents to reach out to your council representatives with any questions or clarifications you may need on any of the ballot issues. Um, and in conclusion, I would also like to thank Tony Terry for his efforts, and the mayor and his staff, and our police department for the efforts put forth, uh, for the Stay-at-Home Home Days. I too had a great time participating in it, and I thought it was very well received. It was very nice to see our neighbors out there, and, and I really do believe that, you know, the residents enjoyed it as well. Um, but, uh, that's, that's all I have for this evening. If there's no further comments, um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our council meeting at 8:24 PM.
Councilman Elliott, I second the motion.
Thank you, Councilman Elliott, can I have a roll call, please?
Delacqua La.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes, have a good evening.
You are adjourned, thank you, folks, enjoy your evening.